Welcome, everybody, to the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board of Directors Special Meeting, and this is our workshop. And so let's get started with our call to order, which I just did, and let's do a roll call.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to go ahead and call order in the way in which we are seated here, so I'll start with Director Megachuk.
Present.
Alternate Director Shilwalter.
Here.
Director Chua.
Here.
Mohan.
Here.
Rennie.
Did you say Rennie?
Yes.
Here.
Thank you. Tyson.
Here.
Walia.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Meadows.
Here.
Skozola.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
And Director Wei. I see you making your way over there. Thank you so much. And we do have a quorum of the board.
Great. Thank you very much, Andrea. Let's now move on to public comment on matters not on the agenda, and you'll note that this is a study session on clean power standards and reporting. Do we have any public that wishes to speak here in the room? He's not making eye contact, so I'm going to say no. How about online? No. All right. Very good. In that case, let's move it on to the regular calendar, item number one, which is a study session. And I do believe it's Monica Padilla, COO and Director of Power Resources, and Marin Menzel, Senior Manager of Energy Policy and Regulatory Analysis. Take it away.
Good evening. Welcome to, I think, what is our first study session for sure of 2023, not of ever. Happy to be here tonight with you guys to talk about a very important topic, which is what is clean? What is clean energy and how do we measure it? How do we report it? And what are we thinking about in the future in terms of clean energy? So tonight's study session is really intended to be really a conversation, an opportunity for you all to ask us questions, to go kind of deep into some technical aspects if we want to, or just even stay really high on just where we want to go with SVCE and how we deliver a clean and reliable product in the future. For the most part, Marin will be presenting. As Director Tyson or Chair Tyson said, Marin is our Senior Manager of Energy Regulatory and Policy Analysis. Marin's responsible for a whole bunch of things in the organization, including being the interface with the California Public Utility Commission for us, and so she works really closely with our compliance team and our front office team to make sure that we are compliant and that we're understanding the rules that the CPUC puts in front of us and to the extent that we're able to, to advocate on behalf of SVC and other CCAs. Marin is also the key person who led our last integrated resource plan. So she's quite familiar with our portfolio and how we plan to meet our greenhouse gas emission reductions as required by the state law and all the other mandates we have. So I will hand it over to Marin. I might interject here and there, but feel free to ask us any questions at any point. We hope that this is a discussion. There is no question. That's not a good question, so ask us anything. Hopefully, you won't stump us. We have Bena here, too, as our lead legislative, whatever her position is. But anyway, any questions you have. I'm terrible with titles. Everybody has to remind me all the time what their title is. But, of course, you all know Ben, as she does. She leads our Legislative and Government Affairs. She tracks legislative bills for us all the way through approval, and then helps us make sure that we understand them and implement them as well. So any question you have, hopefully, one of the three of us can answer. If not, Karissa's here, and we have a bunch of staff people here in the audience as well. So I will hand it to Marin.
Okay. Thanks, Monica. Hopefully, everybody can hear me. So as Monica mentioned, our goal today is really to talk about clean accounting standards, which maybe isn't super exciting, but hopefully, we can make it somewhat interesting. I want to start by taking a few minutes to talk about the existing regulatory accounting mechanisms that we have in place and sort of address some of the shortcomings that exist with them today. And then we can also start talking a little bit about some alternate options that SVC can explore going forward in how we might want to measure our clean standards for the organization. As Monica said, feel free to jump in with questions or comments as we go. But with that, I'll get started. Okay. Perfect. So before we jump into the clean standards, I did want to just level set and remind people a little bit about how SVC functions in the QISO market itself. So as a reminder, SVC is both a supplier to the QISO market and a purchaser from the QISO market. And I think the metaphor that Monica has used with you all in the past is that you can think of the grid as sort of a big swimming pool. And so at any given moment, our supply is pouring some water into that swimming pool, and our customers are pulling some water out of that swimming pool. And an important thing about that is that we don't necessarily have to supply the exact same amount of energy that our customers are pulling from the grid at any given time. So we can get some of the benefits of the market by allowing them to optimize and make sure that the supply and demand on the grid is being met in real time. Jumping into the regulatory, or really the existing accounting mechanisms. So a couple of things to highlight here. First of all, in general, the compliance and regulatory mechanisms that I have to deal with on my end really start on Bena's side of the equation. So generally, there's going to be some legislation that comes through from either the Assembly or the Senate, and that legislative bill is going to be converted into a regulatory or compliance mechanism that we then have to follow. So as it exists today, there's a number of things that we have to do. We'll talk a little bit in more detail about some of these later on. But the important thing to take away here is that the various methodologies that exist today are all done at an annual level. So the Power Content Label looks at our annual emissions of CO2 on a per-megawatt-hour basis. In the RPS world, we're looking at an annual RPS emissions, once again, on an annual basis. And all of these have different sort of pros and cons. Like I said, we'll talk a little bit more about the PCL in a bit, but that's a place where, the way the accounting works, you can actually sort of lose some dirty power that nobody's reporting. The RPS structure has some real benefits to it, and it's done a lot of good for the state, but it ignores the value of carbon-free resources like hydro and nuclear. So very quickly, we can talk a little bit about where SVCE is today. So what we do right now is we fill our RPS obligation with both short- and long-term RPS contracts. You'll see in this graph that we have an increasing amount of long-term RPS. A lot of that is because the PPAs are starting to come online. And then the delta between our RPS goals and our total load is made up with carbon-free resources. So that's that large hydro and nuclear. Did want to jump in a little bit further on the Power Content Label, because I know that that's of interest to a few folks. So this is just an example of the type of compliance reporting we have to do. So our 2022 Power Content Label is posted here. A couple of things to note on the Power Content Label is that really each LSC has to provide this. We have standard practices on exactly how we have to fill it out, but you have some sort of, what we think of as negative outcomes from the way the PCL is structured. So one, you can have entities that have a lot of dirty gas, effectively push that gas off their Power Content Label so that it doesn't get reported. On our end, we actually are also, in effect, underreporting our RPS contribution. If you look here, and it's probably hard to see, we only report about 45% RPS, when in reality, our RPS contribution is actually higher than that. But the way we're required to report it, we essentially lose some of that clean energy. And then, of course, we also have changes to these reporting mechanisms over time. So a few years back, AB 1110 was put into place, which changed how we had to think about resources, and that's why today we have to report about 72 pounds of CO2 emissions per megawatt hour, and that's really primarily coming from the COSO geothermal plant. And I think we've talked to the board about that a little bit in the past, but what that is, is really a clean, RPS-eligible resource, but due to the changes in that bill, we now have to report emissions on it. And I think with that, Monica, I get to, yeah, some stuff that you're going to talk about.
Actually, it looks like it's a question.
Sorry, I've got a question on the COSO, the geothermal. That's a non-closed-loop system, is that correct? And the reason why we've got emissions is because it's not closed-loop?
Yeah. It's not closed-loop. It's the traditional flash method of extracting steam into the turbine. The thing to note is that, like, most geothermal, with the exception of the binary or the one that we visited last, some of us visited last week, the Ormat project, is that traditional form of geothermal. And that emissions associated, anthropogenic emissions associated with geothermal are the only ones that you really need to report, and they're pretty minor. The difference here is, the way we understand it, is that if there are sensors on the facility, then those reportable emissions, all those emissions, have to be reported. And for this particular project, they are required to have sensors because of the location of the facility. And so there is a similar technology up in the Hillsburg area called the Geysers, same exact technology, no emissions reported from that facility. So it really has to do with the local air district board and the standards that they place there. So as Marin said, it is an RPS-eligible resource, and the emissions, even though they look significant here, I mean, they look greater than zero, are really not that great relative to, you know, natural gas or other resources that provide a base load source of electricity. So we've been trying to do some work to better understand if that's something that can be changed, but to our, you know, we haven't made any progress there, and it's really something that is established by the Clean Area Resource Board, right? And then they pass those emissions on to the California Energy Commission, and then we report the emissions, so.
Great. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. So next slide. So if any of you visit our website and you scroll around or search on our website to see what are the product offerings that SVCE has, you see that there's basically two choices for SVCE or an opt-out choice. And so for us, the standard product is what we call Green Start. And Green Start is a 100% clean energy offering, measured on an annual basis. And so that clean can be made up of RPS resources or renewable portfolio standard resources, or non-RPS resources such as nuclear and large hydro. We aim to be about 50% RPS, well above the state requirement on an annual basis, and we've been hitting that target roughly since we first launched in 2017. And then the rest is made up with these carbon-free resources. The thing to note here is that we offer this product, it's a better product than what PG&E traditionally has had, and we offer it at a slight discount to PG&E based on whatever you, the board decides the discount to be that year. If you decide to stay with SVCE, you also have an option to opt up into what we call Green Prime, and that's a 100% RPS product, also 100% clean on an annual basis. And it has the added feature that it's what's called a Green E-certified resource or product. So we contract with an outside agency to verify that what we say we're selling is what we're selling, and that goes above and beyond kind of the current standard, which we have to do with Green Start as well. And so it gets this kind of consumer stamp of approval, have you. This product is offered at a rate premium relative to Green Start because we have to procure additional RPS resources and make sure that those RPS resources are Green E-certified or eligible as well. Oops. The thing to note here, and then the last option is, of course, you could leave SVCE and go to the incumbent utility or PG&E in our case. And it's really hard to say what their product offering is because it varies every year depending on what allocations they award to other CCAs like us or LSCs. But it has to be, the RPS has to be above the minimum state requirement, and so for the current calendar year, it's around 42% RPS, so it has to be at least that. And then to the extent that they haven't sold or allocated some of their other RPS resources or carbon-free resources, they get to count all of that as well. So right now, we're about the same as PG&E, roughly in the 40% range RPS, and because they have so much nuclear and hydro, they're also, they're not 100% clean, but they're, you know, they're pretty clean as well. So just to kind of summarize on some of the clean product challenges that we've been having, so, you know, again, Green Start is our default product, and we've been signing long-term power purchase agreements and negotiating short-term RPS resources and clean resources and advocating for free allocations or allocations for PG&E to the extent we can. But some of those resources are going away in terms of allocations, and so we don't know how long PG&E will continue to offer us carbon-free resources on an allocation basis, but we think it's going to change, starting at least in 2025 at a minimum. So we'll have to go back to the market and make sure that we can acquire those resources. And those carbon-free resources, along with the RPS resources, are in high demand and therefore very, very expensive. We've seen the RPS resources for this current calendar year kind of almost triple in price from where they were last year. So our ability to offer these clean products, whether it's Green Prime or Green Start, is becoming more of a challenge in terms of finding the resources at an affordable price. And then the other kind of challenge with offering products and messaging products is, of course, what Marin explained on the Power Content Label. It may make sense, you know, to us, but it doesn't make sense to the common consumer. I think when they see the Power Content Label and they see emissions, they don't think clean. And then when they see the Power Content Label and they see it side by side to PG&Es, they think PG&E is clear. But obviously, you have to dig down a little deeper to really understand what's in the portfolio. So there's a little bit of confusion and challenges in messaging us being clean when this is what we have to report based on the law. So that's a challenge. And I think that was it for me, Marin.
Okay. So maybe I'll pause here just for a second because we've talked about where we are with different clean accounting systems that we have to adhere to for compliance purposes today. And now I want to switch tacks a little bit and talk about options for clean energy accounting going forward that are not currently state mandated. So I should check and see at this point, are there any questions about what we're doing today?
I have a quick question. I don't know about this, but I was reading something. Is, it might be a dumb question, so forgive me. Is nuclear clean?
So nuclear is considered a carbon-free resource. So it's not RPS-eligible. So for our RPS requirements, we can't count nuclear, but we do count it as a carbon-free resource. So when we get to SB 100 and we're trying to achieve that 100% carbon-free retail sales by 2045, nuclear is in that pool.
Oh, good. Because there, what I read is there are some mini-nuclear that can power a portion of the city. It's not the big nuclear that we're used to, but these are mini ones that are being used in Europe. And I saw that, I said, oh, we're having a hard time getting, you know, clean energy sources. Why not explore the mini-nuclear?
Yeah, they're, I think what you're referring to most likely, they're called small modular reactors, SMRs.
Yes.
And they're in very early-stage development. I think the first one in the U.S. is being installed in, I think it's in Wyoming right now. But actually, this is the first IRP cycle where they're considering that as a candidate resource. So we might see it start to pop up in portfolios that are being considered for California going forward. I think the technology has a lot of room to grow, and in California, nuclear has always been a contested hot issue, but I actually think that folks are getting a little bit more comfortable with it than they were, for example, when Diablo Canyon was retired, or was originally announced for retirement several years ago. So, yeah.
There's a lot of interest as far as what I read.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Good to know.
So question over here, if I can. So Green Start and Green Prime, those are the two offerings? Okay. And you talked about the price, obviously, the RPS going up, but especially what is needed for the Green Prime. So if there was all of a sudden, how often do we change the price for the Green Prime offering? And if there's all of a sudden a rush of consumers for Green Prime, can we actually supply? You see where I'm going. If the demand is too high, the cost, we may not be able to supply that, right? Or can we?
Right. Very good question, Director Meadows, and I will invite Adam to also come up if he wants to answer. He was originally supposed to be part of this panel, actually, but this is something that we're dealing with right now internally. In fact, when Omrit brings the budget to the board later this year, we're going to address that. We're going to have to increase the premium to cover Green Prime starting in 2024. And so it's, the price itself is one component, you know, changing the rate. I think for us, the bigger challenge is finding the product. And so we've been working really closely with Adam and his team to really identify the customers that are on the product, you know, and some of them have been on there since 2017. They like the idea of 100% RPS, but maybe they don't need a Green E-certification, for example. Or maybe there's something that we can offer them as an alternative. But Adam and his team have been working closely with each and every one of the customers and talking to them to see, like, what is it they're really interested in and potential for change? And I don't know if you want to add anything.
I think your microphone is off.
I'm not sure there is a lot more to add, but we have been talking to customers, and it is the minority that is very interested in the Green E-certification part. For the most part, they're more interested in just a clean resource and something that they can rely on and use for their own missions as far as, you know, improving emissions in their work. We are currently working very closely with Monica's team to develop kind of an alternative product that maybe kind of fits between, where we don't have to kind of go through the hoops of certification, but we can provide customers what they want at a solid price. More to come.
I think there was one other hand up.
Two questions. First question is, and this may be later in the next meeting that we're going to have, but at a certain point, if we simply can't get the product that we need for Green Prime, then maybe we have to think about, do we want to offer that product? So it's kind of a, not for this, but it just sparks my curiosity, you know? And then my second question is, have we benchmarked our labels against other CCAs? And how do we stack up with our standard product offering?
We have done that work. I don't know if, I know Pam has done that work internally, just for our purpose, so that we can get some intelligence around how we define and market our product. And I also know that Bruce Carney, who I thought was in the audience, does this every year as well. And I think, Bruce, you can probably correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like we stack up relatively well compared to other CCAs and certainly compared to PG&E as well. And so we've had a really good track record. We want to continue to offer really good products that our customers value and stay true to our value proposition. But to your earlier point, you know, if it becomes a challenge, we have to think about, you know, what can we offer? I just also want to add that our, for the most part, most of our power purchase agreements are resources that can be Green E-certified as well. And so we're going down that path, working with the developers to see if we can get that certification, and then see how much of those resources we can assign to these premium products without kind of running the risk of not being able to comply with all of the other requirements. So we have other options, and we're looking at those very carefully. And so we will stay true to our product offering for 2023, but in 2024, we're looking at both our customers who are on it and seeing if we can not bump people off, but maybe really understand what they want to do here, and then see what we can do with some of our long-term resources.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on the Green E-certified. So are we the only CCA doing that? And is it becoming, is it like one, several CCAs setting up a new standard? Or is it kind of industry-wide that everybody's now going under the same kind of branding?
Yeah. So in my previous life, I worked at a municipal utility a little bit up the road called Palo Alto, who actually offered one of the first opt-up or green tariff products in the nation. And for the longest time, they had the most successful green tariff product in the nation. And Palo Alto Green was the name of it, and I actually helped design it. I designed the first one that failed, and then I helped design the second one that was actually very successful. And then I had the, I actually got to kill it, too, so I got to do away with it. But anyway, the Green E-certification at that time was very necessary because these were new products that were being marketed, right? And people weren't really sure if they were really getting what they paid for. And so why am I going to pay extra money if I don't really know? And so that, there was a need for Green E-certification that went above and beyond the existing certification process that we use with this program called Regis, where we tire renewable energy certificates. So it was needed at the time, and I don't think it's needed as much anymore. This is, that was 20 years ago, right? We've evolved quite a bit. But in some places, it's valuable because if a customer of ours, and we have some customers who have LEED certification on their buildings, if they're in an opt-up product that is Green E-certified or certified by some external agency, then they get LEED points. And so that's why it's important to keep the Green E or some certification. And we're looking at what other certifications are. But right now, most opt-up products, including PG&E's green tariff, has a Green E-certification. But even PG&E is considering eliminating that because there's some additional costs that are going to be potentially encouraged with the Green E-certification in a couple of years.
And that was my question, is like, the cost of the green certification and the E-certified, because, and then just the branding, it's like, green, clean, you know?
Yeah.
You hear all these terms kind of thrown about to a large degree. I want to make sure that there's actual value for this.
Right.
So from a LEED platinum, whatever, you know, point standpoint, it makes sense, but I just want to make sure this organization sees actual intrinsic value in that, too.
Yep. And Adam and his team is also kind of digging into what other CCAs are doing and how they're marketing and certifying their products as well.
Thank you.
All right. Perfect. So with that, I want to jump into potential future accounting mechanisms we might want to look at. And that was actually a good question to lead into this because I think one of the things I want to highlight here is that there's still a lot of work being done to figure out how to do the certification process for any hourly accounting mechanism. So those are not fully in place yet. But as I said at the outset, a lot of the existing mechanisms are done on an annual basis, but there's increasing interest in moving towards hourly accounting mechanisms. So I want to take a few minutes to walk through a few of the existing mechanisms that are sort of out there, and then tell you a little bit about what SVCE staff's planning on doing going forward, and then hopefully, we can have a conversation. So the first thing I want to talk about is what, at least tonight, I'm going to refer to as 24-by-7. And so in this instance, what I mean is really a mechanism by which an LSC, a load-serving entity like SVCE, would match their supply, their clean energy supply, with their expected retail demand in every hour of the day, 365 days a year. And some entities look at it, you know, maybe not 100% of hours, but you might shoot for a 90 or 95% target. But a few things to really call out when you do this 24-hour-seven matching. And first of all, this is a very illustrative example of how you might build a resource portfolio to do it. But what you're going to find is that it's very hard to optimize the portfolio perfectly. And so what I expect we're going to find when we do our analysis, that I'll talk about in a little bit, is that we're going to have portfolios that overbuild most hours of the year. So we tend to be long-capacity in order to ensure that in those, you know, sort of 5% hardest hours, we're able to hit our goals. Another thing to note here is that we can build a portfolio that theoretically is going to match supply and demand in all hours, but we don't have a huge amount of control over our actual resource dispatch, right? Going back to that very first slide where we talked about the ISO and how we interact in it, they, to some degree, get to pick which one of our resources are operating at a given hour, especially when it comes to our batteries, right? It's not going to dispatch because our customers have demand in that hour. It's going to dispatch because that's the economic thing for the QISO to dispatch in order to maintain grid reliability. There has been a little bit of legislative effort in the 24-by-7 space. So SB 1158, which Becker authored, was signed last year. And so we are going to be obligated now to report our progress towards 24-by-7, but there's no direct mandates for, you know, a certain target number of hours that we're required to hit. But it is a good step forward for the state to sort of start to think about how they can do this type of accounting going forward. I think the one, well, no, I'll skip that and come back to it later. Okay. So the other mechanism that I think we're fairly familiar here with at SVC is the Google methodology for the CFE. So that's the carbon-free energy score. One of the things that I think is nice about the Google methodology is that it's not requiring the LSC to match their supply and demand every single hour, but rather, it's thinking about how much clean energy supply the LSC has, or the entity, in the case of a customer about how much clean energy supply the LSE has, or the entity, in the case of a customer like Google, and also thinking about how dirty the grid is in hours when it's relying on the grid for extra energy. So it's kind of a complicated formula, and I don't want to get too in the weeds on it. But essentially, what it says is, if you're an entity and you have 100 megawatts of demand in a given hour, and your supply is providing 90 megawatts, you essentially have a net open position of 10 megawatts in that hour. And so for that 10 megawatts, you need to think about, you know, how dirty the grid is and how much sort of dirty energy you're relying on to fill your need. And so there's sort of an example here, but I think one of the things that's interesting in this methodology is that it perhaps creates a better societal, an improved societal benefit than strict supply and demand matching, because what it does is it incentivizes a entity to procure resources that are clean in hours when the grid is dirtiest, right? Because you don't want to end up leaning on the grid when there's a lot of fossil on the grid, because it's really going to drag down your score. So I think that's kind of an interesting application or interesting thing about the way Google has set up their work. So with that, I just want to highlight what SVECE is planning on doing going forward. So we have begun doing some initial analysis to think about sort of what these different accounting mechanisms and pathways would look like for SVECE if we applied it to our portfolio. So what we're thinking about right now is doing some modeling to assess these different scenarios. So we'll likely do a business-as-usual base case, where we continue with where we are today, assume 100% carbon-free on an annual basis, and meet all of our compliance obligations. And then we'll do analysis where we try to hit a certain CFE score, and what that score is, I think, is still to be determined. And a similar one where we try to hit a certain number of hours of perfect supply and demand matching to look at something more like the 24x7 analysis. Obviously, the modeling we're going to do is going to show what we would need in our portfolios to achieve these different scenarios, and so we'll see the resource build and the associated cost. But I think one of the important things that we're intending to look at here is really evaluating these pathways in terms of risk, right? So we don't want to just say, here's what it would take to get there. We also want to think more in detail about the financial risk, the regulatory risk, and the portfolio risk associated with any of these, you know, options for us going forward. And I think with that, that's all we have prepared. So happy to answer any questions about these accounting mechanisms or hear your thoughts on, you know, our proposal to look into this more deeply.
Anything from you, Monica? I would just add that this is actually in a really exciting area, and this is something that we really, 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 really want to do, because there's a lot of talk out there about achieving 24/7. And our approach to it since the beginning has been to be kind of incremental and very strategic. And, you know, we've added resources that we know will get us closer to 24/7 in a cost-effective way. We've added geothermal. We've added, we've paired storage with almost every single one of our solar resources. These are all things that help us get to 24/7 in a very kind of economic and cost-effective way. That said, you know, we have, there are other CCAs out there who have declared certain goals to get to 24/7 by a certain date, and we want to understand, you know, how feasible is that for us? If we wanted to get there, when could we get there? What would it cost? And to Maran's point, like, how sustainable is this? What's the best way? Is it a 24x7 metric or a CFE metric? We know it's not always going to be an annual clean metric like we have now, so we do have to move towards something. And we're hoping to come back, perhaps at the end of this year, with the results of our analysis, and then at some point with a recommendation on potentially a policy direction on what we should pursue. So with that, we'll take any questions or comments. Director Chuah.
I must have missed it. Please clarify. Where are we now? We're not 24/7. Where are we?
So where we are now is our standards, the metrics that we're using right now are all on an annual basis. So on an annual basis, we're achieving carbon-free, 100% carbon-free, and our RPS is about 50%. So we're about 50% RPS, resources 50% carbon-free. We aren't currently doing a regular assessment of our hourly sort of metrics, but I will say that in our last IRP, we did take our portfolios that we put together for the IRP, and we did try to do a sort of CFE-type assessment. And we estimated we were hitting, I think by 2030, or something like a 95% CFE score. So it was pretty good. When we do this analysis, we might use, you know, a different set of assumptions, but hopefully we don't have to build a huge amount to get to 100%. But yeah, it's definitely a different metric than we've used so far.
Okay. Thank you.
Chair Tyson.
Well, I think we're all concerned about extreme weather events, too, and I'm just wondering, as we look forward, when we come up with what our standards, what we're meeting, whether there's some way to exclude certain extreme weather events. I'm also wondering, this whole 24/7, is there an intermediate path where we say, if we're 24/7, we're going to aim for March through September versus the winter months or something else? I'm wondering if there's any room for that.
I think there certainly is room for it. I suspect what we're going to find when we start doing the analysis is that there's particular hours that are very difficult to fill. And I think they're going to show up, you know, early morning in the winter. We're going to find that we need additional capacity. And so you could hit your goals either by saying, well, let's reduce the number of hours that we need to hit. Maybe it's not 100% of hours, maybe it's 90 or 95%. So that's one way to address it. When it comes to changing the metrics so you don't hit it in all hours of the year or all months of the year, that isn't something I've thought about a lot, but it does kind, the question kind of makes me think that the CFE score has a sort of additional value, right? Because maybe we're okay with not hitting it at times when we know the grid is really clean, right? So, but it's a good question, but I don't think it's one that I've seen in the literature so far when people have thought about this.
Yeah, can answer the first part of the question in terms of, you know, have we considered extreme kind of climate change or extreme weather events? We have not defined those yet, but that would be part of the analysis, is to look at different scenarios. And obviously, hydro is very much driven by weather conditions, whether extreme or not. And since it makes up such a large part of California's clean energy, and then if we're using the CFE score, it really does drive down the CFE or the emissions in many, many hours. So we'll look at varying, you know, hydro conditions. We could also perhaps look at extreme temperatures and what that does to demand as well. We know that the state has been looking at extreme or climate change and extreme weather and its effects on demand, and that's something we'll consider. We also want to see, like, you know, what is the opportunity or the ability to also help achieve using these grid measures or these behind-the-meat measures, like flex demand response and distributed energy resources? How much capacity could we count on to deploy with our customers to help us get to that those hard-to-reach hours? Maybe it's 4:00 AM on a January weekend or something.
Director Meadows?
So this is probably a rare event, but all of our rare events will probably be less rare over time. If you think back a couple of years to the day that was orange and red, and so that was daytime, and we watched our solar, there was no solar production. So I wonder if you accommodate that in your modeling as well, because that's a different hit that we don't usually have, at least in the summertime as much. Again, it's rare, I understand that, but as the wildfires increase, so do our daytime, the possibility of daytime deficits in solar production.
Yeah, that's definitely a concern. I think if you were going down the path of using a 24x7 score, then you wouldn't hit it, right? For many days or for a couple of days. If you utilize a CFE methodology, then you're more likely to hit your target, because those two or three days or that rare event is not going to impact your final kind of result there as much, so.
Yeah, I think the one thing I would add is that I think some of these sort of outlier events are really about reliability challenges, right? So I think we can, even though it may not be ideal, we can live with certain hours where maybe grid emissions are a little bit higher, but what, as a state, we really don't want to see is hours where the grid, you know, can't sustain the amount of demand it has, and we have, you know, load shed events like we did in 2020. So I think what we tend to see is that there's, a lot of these sort of outlier scenarios are thought about in the reliability planning space, where we have a much higher planning reserve margin, or we use much more conservative weather forecasts. But I don't think we necessarily need to think about them in the energy space so much when we're trying to hit our clean targets. And I sort of hate to say that, because, you know, obviously, we want to make sure the grid's as clean as possible, but we need to sort of think of the cost-benefit analysis on that.
Question on the 24/7. So I'm, at first, I was assuming that most of what we're missing is four to nine, because that's the tough spot. But I bet we don't cover a lot of the night or morning hours either, being completely green. And when I think about it, the battery, you know, the expensive way to solve it is with batteries that, you know, we're really targeting at the four to nine area, because that's the worst. But in order to really get all the other areas, we have to buy more baseload, and we don't buy very much clean baseload unless, and so then it led me to start thinking about the hydro and how much we can get, if we buy hydro contracts, how much we can get them to run. I mean, you can run water out of a dam at different times of the day, but they probably have some limitations around when they need water for fish and things like that. So I was really curious about how much limitation there is on when we can force hydropower to be used during the day kind of thing. And you can address the baseload thing, too. It seems to me more geothermal, even with the anthropogenic emissions, is really good for addressing the 24/7 issue.
Yes, so we have no dispatchable hydro in our portfolio, and it'll be very difficult for us to get that. But I'm going to speak just in general terms, in terms of those who do have dispatchable hydro in their portfolio, including PG&E has a lot of it, right? And then the Central Valley Project is another very big dispatchable hydro project. But for the most part, those resources operate, at least in the case of the Central Valley Project, for reasons other than power generation. But let's just say that they were operating for power generation, like PG&E operates their resources, not for recreation and ag and everything else. Then really, they're going to dispatch those resources very similar to how we plan to dispatch our batteries, to a value of storage, to economics. They're going to meet the minimum flow requirements that they have to, to maintain their license and make sure that the water's flowing and fish aren't dying. But beyond that, they're going to operate them to make money, because that's what they should do, right? Now, if we have a standard that moves us to 100% clean, and maybe even a standard that moves us to 100% on a clean on a 24x7, because once we start to report what we're doing, as is required by the Becker, the AB, whatever, AB, SB 1158, then maybe the next step is a target, right? And so now if you put a target on that, and you say you have to be 24x7 clean, all of a sudden, those hours that were never made sense for us to generate power, because they just weren't the economics, are going to become much more economical. So it'll change the pattern of how generation, whether it's coming from hydro or from battery, get dispatched when the demand is there.
Makes them more economical by forcing people to pay more money so that they're willing to dispatch at those hours. But we have to keep in mind the total cost of the electricity also. It can't be, can't go up infinitely, because our customers need to be able to afford it. Our economy needs to be able to function also. So that, it can't always be things that force the price up.
That's a very good point, and that's kind of the third leg on the stool, right? It's clean, reliable, and affordable. And so we're, I think we're making lots of progress towards clean. We're trying to make progress towards reliable from a state standpoint with procurement orders and, you know, forcing certain resources to stay online longer. But the affordable one is, I think, the more challenging one. And I 100% agree with you that it'll become more and more of a challenge. I don't know what the answer is, but I think that, from our perspective, what we'll, at SVECE, is we'll look for, we'll try to look for the most cost-effective solutions, and then hope that we don't get a mandate that does otherwise, so.
Thank you.
I think we have Director Mihalhong first, and then Director Mekachuk.
So on one of your earlier slides, you talked about how uncertain it was to get carbon-free resources through PG&E. And then a later slide, you talked about your goal being 100% carbon-free in the immediate term. So how do those two bits of information reconcile?
So up until a couple of years ago, we were not receiving any allocations from PG&E on their greenhouse gas-free resources. So we were entirely in the market. And so we sign contracts with marketers or providers, whether they're coming out of the Northwest, so Oregon or Washington or in-state, to, and these marketers have rights to certain clean resources, mostly hydro entirely, because they don't have any rights to nuclear other than PG&E. And so we would buy those resources from the market and pay a premium for them, and that's how we would achieve 100% clean. Now, going forward, we'll have a much higher RPS. By 2030, we'll be close to about 65, if not 75%, RPS. So we're only talking about trying to make up that difference of 25% on what our load needs. And assuming that there is no allocations coming from PG&E, and Diablo's entirely gone, or I don't know what's going to happen to Diablo, then we'll be in the market looking for those resources. And if they don't exist in hydro, if we can't find them for hydro, then we'll look for them for renewable. And if we can't get them in a cost-effective way, then, you know, we'll have to come back to the board and say, this is our situation. But for now, it'll be a mix of short-term resources on the market.
Maybe one thing I'd add quickly to that. I think when SVECE first formed and set that 100% carbon-free goal, we were somewhat outliers in doing that, right? There wasn't a huge, there wasn't a massive market for carbon-free resources. There's certainly some demand for it, but because of SB 100, where every LSE and the state now has to go out and get to that 100% by 2045, it's created a lot of value in those carbon-free resources. So there used to be a very strong RPS market. There still is, as Monica said, it's getting very expensive, but it's really boosted the value of carbon-free resources and created a lot more demand for it.
Director Wally?
A little open-ended question as a follow-up to what you just remarked upon. What other regulatory legislation coming out of Sacramento is headed our way which may impact the industry? Just at a high level, what are you looking at, and what are good solutions that you may be considering?
Well, I'm curious what Bennet has to say about this, but...
Could I clarify your questions, just generally or around clean accounting?
Around?
Around clean accounting?
Yes, yes, yes. Or if you have anything else to offer, it'll be good to know.
No, I think the major push was last year's Senator Becker bill, SB 1158, that we talked about. So I have not seen any additional attempts by the legislature this year to look at clean accounting.
Yeah, maybe the one thing I would chime in with is, there has been a push at the legislature for a central procurement entity to do things like offshore wind and geothermal. And from a planning perspective, for us, that can create some challenges, right? We don't want to end up in a situation where we go out and procure, you know, to meet our supply and demand every hour of the year, only then to have either the CPUC or the governor's office come and say, oh, by the way, we're going to have this other entity procure, you know, 100 megawatts on your behalf. And that's going to basically leave us with a bunch of stranded assets. So I think there's planning issues going on at the legislature, but as... But as Bennet said, I think the big push on clean accounting probably happened, at least the most recent clean push, and the only one we see on the horizon right now, happened last year.
But Bennet or Martin, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a bill that actually sets a target for offshore wind, right? Or is that?
There's a study. Go ahead. There was a study bill by David Chu last year, and then there is another bill about planning and how they're going to get to those targets this year. So I think the legislature continues to be really interested in offshore wind and making sure that that is a viable industry going forward.
Thank you for keeping track of what's headed our way downwind. Thank you.
So we are, did we have another question? Oh, Director Skazola.
Yeah, I'm glad that extreme weather was brought up earlier. Now, of course, New York City is experiencing what San Francisco just experienced a couple of years back. So my question is more or less, we're talking about 24/7 as well, and my understanding is geothermal's pretty not affected by extreme weather and is 24/7. And so what I want to know is kind of, is that the future in regards to hitting these marks? And what do we have now? I know that we obviously have interest in the portfolio and everything, but is it an infrastructure thing? Or like, to me, it seems like one of the major solutions to that effect. I'm just curious to hear about that.
I might have to clarify the question, but just in terms of geothermal, it is a baseload resource, clean resource, and we expect it to be available at least 90% of the time or even more. But we did learn last, there is such a thing as called ambient derate. If it gets too, too hot, the facility, the generator actually produces less energy. And so that is something that we will witness on a regular basis during the summer, but it could be even worse if it gets extreme. The other thing that happens when you have extreme weather is it affects the ability to transmit electricity. And so you have something, an occurrence that happens with the transmission, the high voltage, they sag, they start to drip, and they can't transmit as much electricity. And then if you get fires, which you get during extreme weather, then they cut them off completely, or we have PSPF events. So extreme weather impacts, you know, all of the ability to generate and deliver electricity. And to Martin's point earlier, then it really becomes about reliability. I mean, I think that it has to be the focus, is just making sure that we can keep the lights on. And it's not so much about clean at that point. And so I think the state will always maintain some reserves. In fact, there is this thing called Strategic, what is it called? Strategic Reliability Reserve, that the Department of Water Resources is now charged with managing, and they'll retain natural gas resources just for emergency situations. And I don't know if I answered your question, but if I missed anything, please ask again.
That answered a lot, I appreciate it. Just one more, if I can clarify a little bit. I'm just curious about, I understand that it takes many years to prove of projects for energy infrastructure, things of that nature, but is there like a sense for California, especially for geothermal, like, are we moving more in that direction?
Okay.
With extreme weather events, that it feels like even if there's a little bit?
Sure. Yeah, so the state in, the state did mandate what they called firm clean resources, a certain amount of megawatt or gigawatt, megawatt capacity by 2026. And so firm clean resources could be anything that is guaranteed to operate kind of at a baseload level, so geothermal being a prime candidate, and biomass being other types of resources. And so we do have a procurement mandate there. I don't, I know that through this budget trial, budget trailer thing, there's looking at ways of actually promoting or actually affecting geothermal in the Salt and Sea area, is one of the things, because there's a big reserve of geothermal there, but very expensive to develop it and no transmission to get it out right now. So the state very much sees the benefit of geothermal, and they're including it in procurement orders and integrated resource plans going forward. And the market still very much understands the demand for it now, and we're seeing that in the prices for those resources.
Thank you.
Yeah, maybe one quick thing I would add on that is, in the initial SB 100 studies that they did, because I think your point gets to the fact that we're really concerned about our ability to bring on the amount of resources we need to get to our clean goals, and we're really not sure if we can get all this transmission built. And what that study found is that if you allowed the model to build clean, firm resources, and they didn't specify if they were geo or whatnot, but they put in these clean, firm resources, the amount of build that you need to hit your reliability and energy goals drops dramatically, like tens of gigawatts you no longer need to build. So I think if we can get those types of resources online, we're going to have a much better chance of hitting our targets and building enough transmission to actually move the energy across the grid.
Great, thank you very much.
I think we're at time. Did you, any other questions?
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
It looks like the important work right now is that a pathway study that you're doing right now, the question's twofold. Are you doing in-house or are you having outside consultants? Second question is, have any other agencies like us have been doing that? Is, are we championing a really?
Yeah. So our plan right now is to do everything in-house. I think we're still thinking through a little bit about how to do the modeling for the CFE score. So there's arguments to be made that there's outside models that may be useful. So we'll hopefully get it all done in-house. On your second question, there have been other CCAs that have done these types of analyses. So PCE put out a white paper on their 24-by-7 analysis not too long ago. And I know some small, smaller groups have also done some analyses. I think Google supported getting some things out the door as well.
So you were like, compare with what they're doing, and it may be incorporated into your own thinking and champion this project and the report coming up the fourth quarter?
Yeah, that's our goal, is Q4, we'll have something out to you all. And certainly, we've been, you know, doing a literature review, trying to understand how other people are thinking about this, looking at, you know, others' modeling results. And like I said, I think one of the things that we really want to focus on is not just the model results, but really think about it in terms of portfolio risk and good portfolio management practices. And I think that might be where we have a value add that I don't think I've seen in the space yet.
All right. Looking forward to the results. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, well, with that, we will hand it back over to you, Chair Tyson, to, I guess, adjourn? Do we have to adjourn this study session? I think we have one question from the audience or from the public.
Sure, we'll take a question from the audience.
From the public, I mean.
Thanks, this is a topic of great interest to me. Amarn, could you put Slide 10 back up, please?
Not sure.
So what I believe, there was a math error on Slide 10. The result of the equation shouldn't be 90%, it should be 96.5%.
Have I got my math wrong?
Yeah. So 90 plus 10 times points, yeah, okay. So, and if you could go back to the slide that showed the 2022 power content label? That was one of the first slides. So as Monica mentioned, every year, I write a document called How Green, How Cheap, and distribute it to CCE advocates around the state and to SBCE staff. Silicon Valley Clean Energy and PCE are neck and neck for the cleanest CCAs. Most CCAs in Northern California provide dirtier power than PG&E, which is shocking. They do not share SBCE's goal of cleaner energy. And this is clearly going to come back and bite them as the state requirements for clean energy escalate over time. Another thing I wanted to mention, because all of you are city council members, is that your city council's greenhouse gas emissions numbers today essentially say that electricity to your city is carbon-free, because SBCE is virtually carbon-free, and virtually all of your businesses and residents get their power from SBCE. But once this 24-by-7 measurement comes in, you won't be seeing carbon-free power anymore. You'll see a number that says, maybe you're 96.5% carbon-free, or maybe you're 86.5 or 76.5. We don't know what it will be in 2023 or 2024. We have a projection that by 2030, it'll be 95% carbon-free. So you may find your progress toward meeting your city's greenhouse gas goals go backwards for a period of time because of the change in measurement reporting methodology. Girish is shaking his head, but I find it hard to understand how you'll be able to have two different measurements that provide different points of view. In fact, I remember being in this room at an SBCE board meeting in 2016, when an angry Cupertino resident came in and said, you're not 100% greenhouse gas-free. You know, what about that power on, you know, Christmas Eve, when there's no solar and not much wind, and I don't know how much hydro? But clearly, there are hours of the day, and always have been, and will be for a long time, when the power mix includes fossil fuel-generated electricity. So I suspect that this is going to become more visible as the 24-by, as the hourly reporting standard comes into play. And I just want you, as city council members, to be aware that there may be some blowback from your residents and in the reports that you have to give to those residents about how clean your emissions are.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Carney. I think those are good points. And I think, just on top of that, what does our public want? Our public wants clean energy, but they want it on 100% of the time, not 97.5% of the time. And so there is a trade-off there that we certainly need to recognize. Please go ahead.
So, you know, that's an interesting point, that if we have to start reporting 24/7 and showing what the, our carbon percentage is. Currently, we buy attributes so that we cover the year on an accounting basis. I bet you can't buy attributes on a 24/7, but all of a sudden, I bet a market pops up for buying attributes on a 24/7 if it becomes something that's important. So then we can become like we were before, maybe one of the CCAs that wants to say we're 24/7, so we can start buying attributes instead of, I mean, the best thing to do is buy battery, but, you know, it costs a lot, takes a long time to get enough batteries, whatever the more expensive solutions are. But my point is, as the world changes, some of our options may change also to allow us to make those kinds of, you know, if the accounting system changes, what we can buy may change also. Just food for thought.
Important caution, any further comments from the, no. Very good, thank you for those comments. I don't see any others, or do I? Where was it? Oh, go ahead, Adam.
So I'd like to 100% agree with public comment, and really recognize that what you're seeing here is just the journey that California is on to, you know, supplying clean power. It's not going to be an overnight, you know, flip of the switch. And frankly, the three-legged stool that you heard about during Monica's presentation earlier is very real. We have to maintain reliability and affordability while meeting clean goals. So what we're trying to do here is work through, how do we make that palatable to our customers, our communities, as to the journey that we're taking to get to that clean end place?
Thank you for that. With that, do we have any board member announcements or direction on future agenda items? Seeing none, we are adjourned.